Good morning everyone, thank you for being here in the Navajo Nation Council Chambers. We do have a Navajiahteeet meeting scheduled today. It is 10:01 a.m. and I just want to welcome everyone to the Navajo Nation Council Chambers today. We, at this time, for our proposed agenda, we do not have, we're still waiting on some members to arrive. So I know we have a scheduled meeting to begin at 10:00 a.m. We do not have any reports on the proposed agenda. So at this time, colleagues that are here in the chambers, if we could wait until 10:15, we'll check in and then make a determination at around that time. Otherwise, we will have staff contact the chairs of the committees and verify who has, who is supposed to be here today. I know we have members that are advocating on the, at the U.S. Capitol today and throughout the United States. So we do have those members cooperating to be here today. So we'll check back in at 10:15 and thank you all for being here. I can't...
Members of the NABOK EAT Committee, I did receive confirmation that one more member of the Resource and Development Committee is on his way. So, once he arrives, we can begin our NABOK EAT Committee meeting shortly. So, I just want to make that quick announcement that we do have confirmation from a Resource and Development Committee member that they will be present and we will meet our two-committee rule. So, I appreciate your patience. We will get going as soon as possible. There he is. All rise. Just kidding. Okay, could we notify Delegate Norman Begay and also Delegate Karati that we will resume our session here in the chambers? They are the other member of the Budget and Finance Committee to be here. But Mr. Delegate Norman Begay did press his attendance button. So, we will have everybody settle in and let staff notify Delegate Begay. Let me just get that confirmation. All right, let's call this meeting to order today at 10:31 a.m. Thank you all for coming to the council chambers today for the NABOK EAT Committee meeting. We do have two members from the Resource and Development Committee, two members from the Law and Order Committee, two members of the Budget and Finance Committee, and two members from the Health, Education, and Human Services Committee. I appreciate everyone's diligence and attendance to be here today. I know we have members of the Navajo Nation Council that are advocating for the Navajo people at the U.S. Capitol Hill and all over the United States today. Thank you to them for their service to the nation as well. Again, for those that are listening online, my name is Shandine Parish, and it is an honor to serve the communities of Kanta, Denahotzoo, and Chilchambito on the 25th Navajo Nation Council. I am filling in for Speaker Curly today as she is attending to business with our U.S. Capitol as well. So, we'll proceed. We do have a roll call verification, is that correct, Ms. Johnson? Nine present today. So, we'll continue with our proposed agenda today. We have our invocation next on our proposed agenda. Shana, Delegate Dr. Andy Nez, could you lead us today with an invocation? Shana, thank you for your prayer this morning for the NABOK EAT Committee meeting. We appreciate your words of strength today. We will move on to item number two on the proposed agenda, recognizing guests and visiting officials. Members of the committee, would anyone like to recognize guests and visiting officials today? I'll go to Shiaj Delegate, Honorable Delegate Herman Daniels.
[Indistinct] Mr. Rowan Smallcannon, former chapter president for Shantu Chapter. He is the grazing official for Shantu Chapter. [Indistinct]
Thank you, Honorable Delegate Daniels. Members of the committee, if there's no opposition, I'd like to extend Delegate Daniels' time a little bit more just so he can finish his words, and then we'll go to those in queue. We'll give the floor back over to Honorable Daniels.
I'm here to talk about the members of the chambers. I'm here to talk about the members of the chambers. I'm here to talk about the members of the chambers. I'm here to talk about the members of the chambers. I'm here to talk about the members of the chambers. I'm here to talk about the members of the chambers. I'm here to talk about the members of the chambers. I'm here to talk about the members of the chambers. I'm here to talk about the members of the chambers. I'm here to talk about the members of the chambers. Thank you.
Thank you, Shiaj, Honorable Herman Daniels, for your words this morning. I'm here to talk about Roland Smallcannon. It's good to see you here today. All right, we'll go next in queue to Honorable Delegate Helena Nez-Begay. I'd also like to recognize Chairwoman Amber Canes-Bakrati. Thank you for joining us. Go to Shama.
[Indi] I'm here to talk about the members of the chambers. I'm here to talk about the members of the chambers. I'm here to talk about the members of the chambers. I want to recognize our chapters, our 110 chapters, the members of the chambers. I want to recognize our chapters, our 110 chapters, the members of the chambers. They're out there for their communities. I want to recognize our chapters, our 110 chapters, the members of the chambers. I want to recognize our chapters, our 110 chapters, the members of the chambers. They're out there for their communities. I want to recognize our chapters, our 110 chapters, the members of the chambers. They're out there for their communities. I want to recognize our chapters, our 110 chapters, the members of the chambers. They're out there for their communities. I want to recognize our chapters, our 110 chapters, the members of the chambers. They're out there for their communities. I want to recognize our chapters, our 110 chapters, the members of the chambers. They're out there for their communities. I want to recognize our late, a great advocate for our leader, youth advocate, Linda William Draper, who used to work with our youth in Luchii, Page area, Kaibito, Tuba City, referee in Adleha, Nahashijegu. We lost him, so I want to remember him this morning and him and his family. I want to honor the Flagstaff High School Girls Basketball Team, Eagles. They took the state championship, so we had a lot of our native Navajos that played for that basketball team. So, I want to recognize and acknowledge their hard work, so I want to honor the Eagles.
Shama, Delegate Helena Nez-Begay, congratulations to the Eagles. We'll move on to Honorable Delegate Casey Allen Johnson, Vice Chairman of the Resource and Development Committee.
[Indi] Good morning, everybody. Thank you, Pro Tem Speaker Parrish, for chairing the meeting this morning. Just like to say welcome to all my colleagues here. Thank you for being here this morning with us and also those that are here with us in the gallery. Thank you for being here. This morning, I would like to recognize a special guest from my home community, our newly President of Cameron Chapter, Evelyn. Can you stand up? And I'd also like to congratulate Shayna Yasi. She also won the Vice President for the Cameron Special Election that took place the other day, so just like to congratulate her on her election. Just like to thank everybody for being here this morning, and again, look forward to a very good discussion today.
Thank you, Honorable Casey Allen Johnson, for your recognitions this morning. I will go to Shada, Chairwoman Amber Canes-Bakrati, for recognitions.
[Indi] Thank you. Appreciate it, colleagues. We had a wonderful discussion at today's Missing and Murdered Dead Relatives Task Force, so I want to thank the task force members for continuing to advocate for our missing loved ones. We did send a heartfelt letter to Emily Pike's mother, and she appreciates the support that she's receiving from Navajo Nation during this time of the tragic murder of her daughter, who was only 14 years old. And so, on behalf of the Navajo Nation Missing and Murdered Dead Relatives Task Force, we've asked the Office of the Speaker on behalf of the council to provide a healing blanket to the family, and so Speaker's Office will be coordinating the taking of or presenting the healing blanket to the family this Saturday. San Carlos Apache will be hosting a memorial and candlelight visual, so I want to appreciate all of my colleagues for their continued support in navigating this very hard and treacherous time for our young children in the state of Arizona. We can do better by making sure all of our children who are placed in these home, group homes are taken care of, that we're properly notified on their well-being. We're finding out that there's more and more challenges when it comes to our children who are out of our homes, and so the Navajo Nation, this is our opportunity to really step up and provide those services. With that in mind, we also should be sending a federal position paper on the impact of all of these closures and the impact to our programs, to Medicaid, to our VA service, to Department of, or BIE, BIA.
Shada, Chairwoman Amber Canes-Bakrati, I'd like to extend some time if you would like to finish your statements today.
Colleagues, I'll just wrap it up by my request. Pro Tem is that we start drafting, or on the agenda, I'll ask, at the end of our agenda, we discuss the top items. Every day, there's an assault on our Navajo Nation citizens when it comes to the federal responsibility of their obligation on our treaty. Treaty of 1868 is alive and well, and there's an obligation to provide public safety, health, education, natural resources, in exchange for what our Navajo Nation citizens gave up during that time. And so, as a council and Navajo Nation leadership, we need to have a formal letter, a formal position on how this is impacting our Navajo citizens' mind, mentality, their livelihood, how it's going to impact our grazing, how it's going to impact our medical care, and we must stand firm that they cannot just cancel that lease for the Navajo Nation Area Office and IHS. That will dramatically impact how our people access health care, whether it's at an IHS facility, a 638, or anything surrounded by providing access to health care, and that their attempt to privatize BIE should be in consultation with the tribes, as there's communities that solely rely on BIE schools to provide education. And in terms of violence against women, removing our recommendations from the Not Invisible Act Commission is an act of violence, as the federal government has a responsibility to keep us safe. Shana.
Thank you, Shada, Chairwoman Amber Canes-Bakrati. Thank you, members of the Nebuchadnezzar Committee, for your recognitions and proposals this morning. Members of the committee, I don't see anyone else in queue for recognizing guests and visiting officials. We'll proceed on with our agenda. We look forward to those amendments to today's agenda, Shada. Okay, we're going to go on to review and adopt the agenda. If we could have Ms. Johnson or Ms. Johnson or staff read the proposed agenda into the record.
Thank you, Madam Chair Pro Tem. Members of the Nebuchadnezzar Committee, this is a regular meeting. Proposed agenda, Thursday, March 13, 2025, 10 a.m. One, call meetings order, roll call, invocation. Two, recognize guests and visiting officials, two-minute limit per delegate. Three, review and adopt the agenda. Four, review and adopt the journals. There are two journals, February 13, 2025, and February 24, 2025. Five, receive reports, none. Six, old business, none. Seven, new business. Item A, legislation 0016-25. B, legislation 0020-25. C, legislation 0021-25. D, legislation 0022-25. E, legislation 0024-25. F, legislation 0026-25. G, legislation 0027-25. Eight, close of meeting announcements to Madam Chair Pro Tem.
Thank you, Jalissa, for reading the proposed agenda into the record. Members of the committee, is there a motion to adopt today's proposed agenda? Motion by Delegate, Vice Chairman Casey Allen Johnson. Do we have a second? Second by Delegate Danny Simpson. Members of the committee, are there any amendments to today's agenda? To see Chairwoman Amber Canes-Bakrati, I'll recognize Chairwoman Amber Canes-Bakrati, and then we'll go to Shiaj Delegate Daniels.
Yes, thank you. First, I wanted to ask, I don't know if staff reached out to the sponsors of the legislation and asked for consent, so that's a provision that helps this committee be effective and efficient. I just don't know the process because I'm not sponsoring any of these legislations, so if I could defer to the sponsors, I'll certainly support some of these position statements, unless there's an amendment to be developed by a consent agenda. The second item, colleagues, I just wanted to add, if we can move receiving reports five to after new business, so it would be like, I don't know, the new number eight, but I'd like just a report or a discussion with either the Washington Office or the Office of the President and Vice President on developing a federal response on behalf of Navajo Nation and its citizens regarding the impact of the federal closures, the federal reduction of force. The U.S., I'm sorry, the Arizona State Attorney's Office is asking Navajo Nation to submit any impacts to their citizens, and working with the senators, you know, Lujan Heinrich's office, Senator Gallego, Senator Kelly. I haven't heard too much from the Utah side, but they are waiting for a Navajo Nation official response. I know every day is a new challenge, but as Nebuchadnezzar, if we could just start having that discussion and then giving some direction to staff, and then we could finalize, at least through a letter, a joint letter from Navajo Nation President and Speaker. So, that's my request, colleagues. Just to add that at the end of the discussion, either as a report or I don't know if Doze turned off my mic. My email's not working. Now, my mic's not working, but that will not deter me. So, I just wanted to ask for some guidance in terms of if this committee wanted just to hear that report or give us some direction. I know we had a leadership meeting on Saturday, but we do need to put something on paper because we, the people need to know that we're concerned about these issues that are happening on a daily basis, and the Navajo Nation, we should have a united front on how we're going to address these issues at the federal level, because it is trickling down to the state and eventually trickle down to Navajo Nation because how much of our budget and resources are dependent on the federal government. You know, we've done a budget, what, $500 million, but the federal money that comes in is in the billions, and so that's my request right now. Thank you.
Shada, Chairwoman Amber Canes-Bakrati, there is a question about the position legislation. I do see that we have legislation 002125. Honorable Dr. Andy Nez, there is a question posed, whether this legislation needs an amendment, also your legislation 002225, or, so we'll start with Honorable Dr. Andy Nez, if you could confirm if your legislation needs an amendment or not.
[Indi] I'm here to talk about the members of the chambers. I'm here to talk about the members of the chambers. Legislation 002125. I know Vice Chair Slater is working on a proposed amendment. I don't know if it'll be ready in time. It sounds like OLC, and they're going back and forth on email, so I'm not sure of the update on that, but there are no amendments to 002225.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Dr. Andy Nez. So, 002225 does not need an amendment. Let's see, the other position legislation I do see is 002725, and that legislation does not need an amendment. Chairwoman Amber Canes-Bakrati, to answer your question with, I know you're motioning for a possible consent agenda, so I just wanted to verify the legislation you'd like the consent agenda to maintain.
I appreciate it. So, let's add, we'll add Delegate Andy Nez with some concurrents. So, I'll motion to develop a consent agenda for those two legislations and open if any other sponsor of a legislation would like to add, just to develop a consent agenda, and if there's any questions, and my colleagues, you could just remove it off, and we can move forward. But I also, I don't know, Chair, I also wanted to motion to add that report, so how do you want to move forward? Did you want to have those two separate motions? Because I would prefer to do the report first so that staff can get ready for that discussion at the end of new business. Pro Tem.
Thank you, Shada. I have been advised that you can do both actions in one motion, so we can, I'll recognize the motion to move the reports, item number five, down to after new business, and then to add the report. I would recommend, well, if it's a report, then the Nebuchadnezzar Committee can vote on accepting the report, and we can have a discussion through the questions, so that is a formal way to go about the discussion. I don't know if the Washington Office has the capacity to do that at this time, but I'll recognize the motion to add the report today, and then we'll check in with the Washington Office at the time that the report come through, if the committee would like to proceed with that. So, I'll recognize the motion to move the reports after new business and also add the reports regarding the position letters regarding the, the, generally, I guess, Chairwoman Amber Canes-Bakrati, is your request for the report title to be on, is there a specific federal action you'd like to hone in on, or all federal actions?
Thank you. I'll just say at this point, it'll be all encompassing, so it'll just be developing a Navajo Nation response to the federal executive orders.
All right, so I'll recognize the motion from Chairwoman Amber Canes-Bakrati to move reports, receiving reports after new business, and within the reports to add a new report for the Navajo Nation to develop a position statement regarding the federal government's executive orders, and the presenters will be the Office of the President and Vice President and the Navajo Nation Washington Office. So, we'll have staff update the board, and also recognize a part of that motion is to do a consent agenda for 002225 and 002725.
Since I'm recognized, Vice Chair Casey Allen Johnson has asked to add the consent letter A, legislation 0016-25, colleagues, and also has requested new business, letter E, legislation 0024, to be added to the consent agenda, so colleagues, if you could review and, and if there's any other, I did want to say for new item, business B, is there a cosponsor, or I can cosponsor this critical information or resolution regarding Colorado Indian Child Welfare Act?
There's no, there's no cosponsor at this time, Chair.
So, I'll cosponsor, or someone can, colleagues, maybe, and then Vice Chair will help me cosponsor that legislation, Shama. Are you going to cosponsor? And then, okay, and then Delegate Shama, Helena Nez-Begay will cosponsor legislation 0026-25, and if I could add that, colleagues, onto the consent agenda, that's new business, letter F. And Pro Tem, it looks like you're the sponsor of letter G. Let me know if you, if you have an amendment. Okay, okay, no amendment.
Members of the committee, as the staff are updating the board, the consent agenda should include legislation 1625, legislation 2025, legislation 2225, legislation 2425, legislation 2625, legislation 2725. Chairwoman Amber Canes-Bakrati, does the Chairwoman Amber Canes Bacardi, does the board reflect your amendment?
Okay, let me. So I see 16's on there. Okay, we'll remove 0021-25. There is an amendment we're waiting for. Appreciate it, staff. Appreciate that, um. Amendment. Then 022. But 022 is okay? 022 is okay, staff? 0024, yep. 0026, yes. And 0027, yep. Mariana, are you working on that amendment for? Okay, so we'll take it off the consent. Okay, appreciate it. Okay. Appreciate it. Yate, Chanala. Thank you, and thank you, staff. I know that's a lot of, it looks good, Pro Tem, and I'll just defer to my colleagues on the floor. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Amber Canes Bacardi. And then, uh, members of the committee, is there a second to the motion on the floor? Second by Honorable Delegate Herman Daniels. Members of the committee, are there any questions to amendment number one? I'd like to recognize, um, Council Delegate Shawna Ann Claw for attending today and being here in the chambers. Thank you, Delegate Claw. All right, hearing no questions, third call for questions on amendment number one. All right, hearing none, we will go to a roll call vote on amendment number one. We have eight seconds on the board. Um, we apologize, Delegate Helena Nez Bagay and Delegate Arviso, you were excused for about a few minutes on the board, so. Sorry if you, you pressed the button and that didn't show up on the board. Delegate Stephen Arviso, how do you vote? Delegate Arviso votes green. And Chairwoman Amber Canes Bacardi, how do you vote? Oh, Delegate Norman Bagay votes green. And Chairwoman Amber Canes Bacardi, votes green. Um, we too have 10, 10 members voting affirmative, um, multiple members excused, and, uh, two members absent today, so the motion does carry on amendment number one. We'll proceed on with our main motion. Members of the committee, are there any more amendments to the agenda? Okay, hearing none, or I'll recognize Honorable Daniels. Okay, Honorable Daniels, um, retracts his request. Members of the committee, final call for questions. All right, hearing none, we'll go to the main motion. Um, Mr. Alyssa Johnson, could you recap that amendment? And we'll proceed to the vote on the main motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Pro Tem. Amendment one, move receive reports to the last item as new item seven and add a report, a collaborative, collaborative report by the Navajo Nation Washington Office and Office of the President and Vice President regarding a strategic development response to the US federal executive orders. Next, create a consent agenda to include Legislation 0016-25, Legislation 0020-25, Legislation 0022-25, Legislation 0024-25, Legislation 0026-25, and Legislation 0027-25. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We'll proceed with a roll call vote on the main motion. Thank you. Members of the committee, we have the full vote of the delegates here in the chambers. And we have one minute left voting. I'll call out for Honorable Delegate George Toth, Honorable Delegate Rick Nez. How do they vote? They are absent today from the vote, so we will, I'll call the vote at 10 in favor, zero opposed, and, uh, many members of the, of NABKES Committee, um, excused. So we'll call the vote today with the, uh, vote in the affirmative. We'll move on to our next item of business. Thank you, members of the committee. We do have an agenda before us. We'll proceed on to receiving reports, or sorry, we'll proceed on to review and adopt the journals. There are two journals before the committee. Uh, that's the February 13th and the February 25th Journal. Those were emailed out to the committee on March 12, 2025 at 10:49 a.m. Members of the committees, are there a motion to accept the journals? Motion by Vice Chairman Casey Ellen Johnson. Do we have a second to the motion? Second by Delegate Shawna Ann Claw. Members of the committee, are there any questions to the journals? Hearing none, we'll proceed on to a roll call vote. Thank you. Members of the committee, we have the full vote of the council delegates here in the chambers. We have 10 members voting in the affirmative, two members absent from the vote, and zero members opposed, and we have 11 members excused. I will call the vote today at 10, 10 voting in favor. Uh, the motion does carry on our journals. We will proceed on to, um, our new business. The first item on new business is our consent agenda. Ms. Johnson, could you read the consent agenda into the record?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Pro Tem. Consent agenda, Legislation 0016-25 in action relating to the Resources and Development Committee, NABKES Committee and the Navajo Nation Council, annexing the lower Highway 89 land, 13.79 acres into the Cameron Chapter Navajo Nation. Prime sponsors, Honorable Casey Ellen Johnson, co-sponsor Honorable Arvin Mitchell, co-sponsor Honorable Otto So. This legislation is final authority at Navajo Nation Council. Legislation 0020-25 in action relating to the NABKES Committee supporting Colorado House Bill Number 25-1204 titled Colorado Indian Child Welfare Act. Prime sponsors, Honorable Crystaline Curly, co-sponsors Honorable Amber Canes Bacardi. This legislation is final authority at Navajo Nation Council. Legislation 0022-25 in action relating to the NABKES Committee supporting the New Mexico Senate Bill 163 titled an act relating to public schools permitting public school student who are enrolled or eligible or for enrollment in federal-recognized Indian nations, tribes, and pueblos to wear tribal regalia at graduation ceremonies or public school events. Prime sponsors, Honorable Andy Nez. Legislation 0024-25 in action relating to the NABKES Committee and Navajo Nation Council, confirming the appointment of Ms. Mabel Franklin to the Dene Uranium Remediation Advisory Commission representing the Western Abandoned Uranium Mines Region. Prime sponsors, Honorable Casey Ellen Johnson. That legislation is final authority at Navajo Nation Council. Legislation 0026-25 in action relating to the NABKES Committee concurring with the Navajo Nation President's acceptance of donations totaling $302,000 to the Dene Scholarship Annual Fund for use by the Office of Navajo Nation Scholarship and Financial Assistance. Prime sponsors, Honorable Vince R. James, co-sponsors Honorable Andy Nez. Legislation 0027-25 in action relating to the NABKES Committee opposing State of Utah House Bill 300 amendments to election law and requesting the State of Utah to consult with Navajo Nation to provide alternatives for Utah election code amendments for citizens of the State of Utah Navajo voters. Prime sponsors, Honorable Shandine Parrish, co-sponsor Honorable Crystaline Curly, co-sponsor Honorable Herman Daniels Jr., co-sponsor Honorable Curtisy Nieto. Legislation, Legislation 0020-25, Legislation 0022-25, 0022, 02625, 02725, are all final authority at NABKES Committee per Navajo Nation Council Standing Committee Rules of Order Rule 9. Legislation has been read into record by electronic voice recording. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, for reading the consent agenda into the record. Members of the committee, is there a motion on the consent agenda? Motion, motion by Vice Chairman Casey Ellen Johnson. Do we have a second? Second by Delegate Danny Simpson. Members of the committee, we'll open up the board for a roll call vote. Would you open the board? Okay, the board's open. Members of the committee, we have the full vote of the council delegates here in the chambers. We do have Honorable George Toth and Honorable Rick Nez absent from today's vote. I do not see them in the chambers. I'll call out further vote to see if they vote. I hear no vote. All right, we'll recognize the affirmative votes, if 10 in favors, zero opposed, myself not voting, 11 members excused. The motion does carry on the consent agenda. Members of the committee, we'll proceed on to our first legislation in new business, which is Legislation Number 2125, sponsored by Honorable Dr. Andy Nez. We welcome up Honorable Dr. Andy Nez and his agents, uh, to the legislation. Alyssa, could you read the legislation into the record?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Legislation 0021-25 in action relating to the NABKES Committee supporting Arizona Senate Bill 1671 title in act amending sections 36-2907, 36-2939, and 36-2981, Arizona revised statutes appropriating monies relating to the Arizona healthcare cost containment system. Prime sponsors, Honorable Andy Nez. This legislation is final authority with NABKES Committee per Navajo Nation Council Standing Committee Rules of Order. Rule 9, legislation has been read into record by voice electron, electronic voice recording. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Members of the committee, do you have a motion to consider the legislation today? I'll recognize the motion from Honorable Herman Daniels. Do we have a second to the motion? Second by Honorable Danny Simpson. All right, we'll give, uh, Honorable Dr. Andy Nez some time on the floor to begin his presentation on the legislation. Floor's yours.
Hakoshin, Ahiha, Shada, Arakoro, Nana, Yat, Eben. We are here, um, considering this legislation to support Senate Bill 1671. Uh, this, um, legislation, uh, is supporting the current, uh, bill that's in our senate. It's actually going to be read here in a couple of hours. Um, the senate does convene at 11 o'clock, uh, Arizona time. I have to get used to saying that now since we switched over, um, to daylight saving time. So, uh, 12 o'clock our time is when they convene there in, in the senate. So, um, I did get a chance to speak with Senator Hatatli. She's, um, uh, may be online. Uh, she did say she would be glad to also speak to the supporting resolution. Uh, this resolution, uh, here is supporting, um, Senate Bill 1671, where back in October 2024, uh, the Centers for Medicare Medicaid Services approved, uh, access the 1115 waiver where they would be able to reimburse traditional healing, uh, to many of our 638 IHS facilities across the Navajo Nation and being able to, uh, accept that and being able to work with those, um, tribal, uh, healthcare facilities here on the nation, um, being able to get those reimbursements. As we know, many of our 638 IHS facilities provide these traditional services. Um, we do have many of our healthcare facilities who are present in this room. Uh, we do have Tuba City Regional who is here with us this morning. We have Fort Defiance Indian Health Board who is also here with us this morning and others. Um, here to my right, uh, is, um, Dolly. She is from the Tuba City Regional Healthcare Center. Also to my left here, uh, is Ms. Terry Chi from the Fort Defiance Indian Health Board. Both of my agents have been very active in, in the, um, work group that's been, you know, active pretty much for the last decade and seeing this Senate bill come before our Arizona senators and legislators will be, uh, great to hear from both of them. So I've, um, asked them here, uh, to be present and to provide a little more insight into what is transpiring there in our Arizona legislature. Um, there is a proposed amendment. I did work, um, Chair Slater, who chairs our caucus for Arizona, um, has a, a, an amendment to support and oppose additional bills, uh, that we have been discussing at the Arizona caucus. Um, so I appreciate the support as well from my Arizona colleagues. Uh, so at this time, I will, uh, give some time to Dolly from Tuba City to just, uh, introduce herself and share a little more insight into this, um, senate bill and then go to, um, Ms. Chi here.
Uh, Yat, Eben, uh, I'm Dolly Small Canyon. I'm, uh, the Community Health Division Chief from the Tuba City Regional Healthcare Corporation. Thank you, uh, committee members, um, Honorable, um, Andy Nez here, uh, who asked us to, uh, come in this morning and support this, um, this legislation. So I really appreciate the time that you have given us this morning. So, Ahiha. So as, um, Honorable Nez has, um, stated, there has been a tribal, um, or a traditional healing work group that was established with IHS facilities, 638, um, tribal health organizations, um, and other tribal organizations across the state of Arizona. And this was initiated right around 2014, 2015 timeframe. And our, our responsibility at that time was to coordinate and work with, uh, ACCESS and, uh, and eventually through, uh, CMS Centers for Medicare Medicaid Services. So that work really, uh, started off very well. However, there was a period of time where that support was not there, um, um, through several, many years. And, uh, and it started back up toward the latter end of the past administration, President Biden's administration. So over the past, this past year and really up, uh, the past six months, we've been working very hard. The tribal, um, uh, the traditional healing work group has been working very hard with CMS and, um, access to get this, um, this. and access to get this waiver passed. And so that was done right about around October of 2024. So we are now in the process of getting the bill through the Arizona Legislature. And this work could not have been possible without the organizations that you see here in the chambers, the IHS sister facilities, as well as the Arizona, what is that organization called? Arizona Advisory Council on Indian Healthcare. So their work has been invaluable in getting this legislation through the Arizona state legislative bodies. So we are almost there. It's just about to be passed through the senate. It's on its final reading, as we were told the other day. So it's going to make its way over to the House of Representatives. So we're hoping that that will also be a positive for. And this is really important for the traditional healing services that we would like to, that facilities have not implemented or have already implemented. And we would really appreciate your support in this initiative. [speaking Spanish].
[speaking Spanish]. We will have Ms. Chi, who has been a longtime champion of this effort, and allow her some time to also introduce herself and elaborate.
Good morning. My name is Teri Chi and my plans are [speaking Spanish]. I'm originally from Crown Point, New Mexico. However, I live here in Windo Rock now. I am the Director of Revenue Psycho Management at Fort Defiance Indian Hospital. And I am also the chairperson for the Arizona Tribal Traditional Practitioners Work Group. And so we have been on this journey for about 10 years. As previously mentioned, the goal for the work group is to have our patients have access to our traditional practitioners that work within our healthcare delivery system with IHS and 638 facilities. As we know, we do employ practitioners within the facilities, the healthcare facilities. However, at this time, they are not getting reimbursement for their services. For this Senate Bill 1671, the goal is for the practitioners to get reimbursed for the services they do provide. All the facilities on Navajo Nation is included in this senate bill, the federal's facilities and the 638 facilities. So we have been working on this initiative for quite some time. And however, we've been working through it and getting the support that we need from all the 22 federally recognized tribes within the state of Arizona. So, but thank you for allowing us this time to share some of our information that we have on Senate Bill 1671. Thank you.
[speaking Spanish]. This senate bill again would be unanimous in supporting our practitioners for the reimbursement. So colleagues, that's the presentation. I realize we do have some time left. I don't mind waiving the rest of that time. I also understand that the amendment is ready. Chair, that concludes our presentation.
[speaking Spanish]. [speaking Spanish]. Honorable Dr. Andy Nez for your presentation today on the legislation. Members of the NABQ Committee, this legislation was taken off the agenda because there is an amendment. I did talk to the chairman of the caucus and we do have the amendment ready. The language has been sent out to, I believe, the council delegate who will be sponsoring the amendment. So I'll recognize the council delegate who would like to offer the amendment on the legislation. Press your RTS button. I think it's Honorable Casey Allen Johnson.
Thank you, Pro Tem Speaker. At this time, I'd like to offer an amendment to 0021-25. Is that ready?
All right, thank you, Honorable Casey Allen Johnson. Could we read amendment number one to the legislation into the record?
Thank you, Madam Chair Pro Tem. Amendment one, one on page one at line 15 in the title of the legislation, after containment system, change the period to a semicolon and add the following clause. Overstrike period in underline insert semicolon and supporting and opposing other Arizona bills and underline. Two on page two at line 13, insert new paragraphs G and H as follows. New paragraph underline. G, the Navajo Nation also supports additional Arizona bills listed in the attached Exhibit B. These bills have been reviewed and vetted by the Navajo Nation Council Caucus of Arizona Delegates. The caucus has determined that supporting these bills is in the best interest of the Navajo Nation. Such support reflects the Navajo Nation's commitment to protect tribal sovereignty, promoting economic development, and ensuring the health and well-being of the Navajo people. The Navajo Nation supports all Arizona legislator funding and project appropriation bills to the direct resources to strengthen Navajo communities. Paragraph H, the Navajo Nation opposes certain Arizona bills listed in the attached Exhibit B and underline. Three on page two after line 18, add new paragraph B as follows. Paragraph B underline. B, the Navajo Nation has, the Navajo Nation also supports and opposes the Arizona bills listed in the attached Exhibit B and underline. Four on page two at line 21, after Arizona Senate Bill 1671, change the period to a comma at the following new clause. Overstrike period, underline, comma, and the other Arizona bills listed in the attached Exhibit B and underline. Five, attach new Exhibit B. Six, renumber, reletter succeeding paragraphs, sections, and exhibits as necessary and appropriate. The Office of Legislative Services and the Office of Legislative Counsel are authorized to make technical edits to this legislation and its exhibits to implement the committee's intent. This amendment supersedes inconsistent language and any other amendments. Also attached to the amendment is the new Exhibit B. Madam Chair Pro Tem.
Thank you, Jalissa. Members of the committee, is there a second to the motion on the floor? Second by Delegate Shawna Anclaw. Members of the committee, are there any questions to amendment number one? Second call for questions. Third call. Hearing none, we'll go to a roll call vote on amendment number one. 20 seconds on the board. Honorable Danny Simpson, how do you vote? With that, we have 10 members voting in affirmative. Those are all the council delegates that are here in the council chambers today. We have two members absent, 11 members excused. The motion does carry on amendment number one. We'll proceed back to the main motion. Members of the committee, are there any questions to the legislation? Second call for questions to the legislation. Third call. Hearing none at this time. Jalissa, could you, or this is final authority on NABQ, correct? And then Honorable Dr. Andy Nez, do you desire a second reading of your legislation? No desire for the second reading of the legislation. We'll proceed to a roll call vote. Could you open the board up?
Okay, colleagues, just as you're voting, I just want to send our appreciation to you for your support. I do see Shama Lillian Roenhorst. She's the president of the Fort Defiance Indian Health Board. Juanita Martinez, who's also a board member. Shama Otto, Mr. Davis as well, Fort Defiance Indian Health Board. Joette Walters, CEO from Tuba City. Shichay, Mr. Sosi as well, who's a traditional practitioner for Fort Defiance Indian Health Board. Franklin Fowler, Tuba City as well, board president. And if I missed anyone, I apologize, but we do certainly appreciate you being here. Christine Bessanti, CFO from, excuse me, Fort Defiance as well. [speaking Spanish].
We have 30 seconds on the board. Delegate Curtis Yenito, how do you vote? Delegate Stephen Arvisto, how do you vote? Board is now closed. Honorable Stephen Arvisto, how do you vote? Delegate Arvisto votes green. Members of the committee, we have 10 members voting in affirmative, zero opposed, myself not voting, 11 members excused, two members absent. The motion does carry. Thank you, Honorable Dr. Andy Nez, for your time and thank you to your agents today. Members of the committee, we are now proceeding on with our agenda with receiving reports. I wanted to get an update from Ms. Johnson to see if the Navajo Nation Washington office and the Office of the President and Vice President are ready to present before the committee takes action. Ms. Johnson, could you give an update to the committee? Okay, I want to confirm to see if the Washington office was on the call. We do have staff verifying that the Washington office is on the call. Do we have anyone from the Office of the President and Vice President? Javel Begay, what is her position? Anyone from the Office of the President and Vice President on the Zoom? Anyone from the Office of the President and Vice President? I don't see anyone here in the chambers, but is anyone on Zoom on behalf of the Office of the President and Vice President? Hearing no response from the Office of the President and Vice President. They have been notified. However, there are members of the office on the Zoom but are not responding. Could we verify that the Navajo Nation Washington office is on the call?
This is Director Ahestin and I am on the call.
Good morning, Director Ahestin. Director Ahestin, I know that you received an email this morning from our advisors here at the legislative branch. And the request was made, motion was made on the floor and it was passed by the NABQ Committee today to begin discussions on developing a position on behalf of the Navajo Nation regarding the executive branch orders. Today, the committee has requested that there will be a report from the Washington office to those effects. So, Mr. Ahestin, I know you received the information this morning, but I wanted to know if you are prepared at this time to answer questions from the NABQ Committee? And then I will share, you'll share that information to the committee and then we'll proceed as planned. So, Mr. Ahestin, would you confirm that you've received the information?
I did receive an email at 1:23 PM, so about 10 minutes ago, requesting this report. And I'm more than happy to have a discussion, but any discussion revolving strategy, I recommend having an executive session. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ahestin. Members of the committee, as we're proceeding on with our agenda, we're on receiving reports. We've been advised that we would have a discussion in executive session. So members of the committee, before we proceed with this report, would anyone like to be recognized too? Because the committee can also motion to suspend floor rules and we can proceed. Otherwise, we'll go on with the agenda as proposed. So I'll recognize Delegate Amber Canes Bacardi.
Oh, yeah, thank you. So if I could rephrase, and I appreciate Mr. Ahestin for being on the line. I know during the fiscal year '25 budget, we, as a council, we're trying to make sure your unmet need was taken care of, but I hope that we could continue to support the office. With that in mind, if you could just provide maybe a 10-minute high-level summary of items that your office is tracking so that the public is aware of the coordination with Navajo Nation leadership? And the second item would be, once that public discussion, especially when it comes to the Medicaid, I'm concerned about the House Representative's bill that was passed out of the House and its impact on Medicaid. We do have here in the council chambers some of our 638 health boards. So I would just want to have this maybe conversation. And then if the committee here wants to move into executive session, then we can make that determination at the time. But I would like to see some press, some PRs, maybe some videos, because we have veterans are concerned about how it's going to impact the VA. We have Navajo Nation citizens who are concerned about the proposed lease cancellation and what does that do with, how that will impact some of the billing? Because if they're forced to be in person, how can they be in person at a building that's no longer available to them? We've heard are there, you know, some transportation funding that has been frozen? We're also seeing from some of our students that, you know, they may not have the opportunity to go to college in their field because their university is not sure of the future of federal funding. So I'd just like to lay out that umbrella of issues. And it could be 10 minutes, depending on the committee and how we move forward. I think I'll defer to the committee and if their strategy or if the committee just wants to direct. And then we have a leadership meeting that could be an executive session. Thank you, Pro Tem.
[speaking Spanish]. Thank you, Chairwoman Amber Canes Bacardi. Members of the committee, would anyone like to state any positions? Otherwise, we'll proceed on with updates from the Navajo Nation Washington office. All right, members of the committee, we'll proceed on with the report. Mr. Ahestin, if you do at any time advise us to go into executive session, please state that for the committee so that they can motion, make the proper motions and actions as we proceed. But otherwise, could you provide any updates to the committee that you might have available today? And the committee can then, I'll work with the committee and the speaker to develop next steps on leadership meetings or internal meetings. So at least the Navajo Nation Council has a set of dates that we can look forward to that can be a part of our calendar so we can continue this discussion. Mr. Ahestin, with that said, I'm going to turn the floor over to you for a report on updates from the Washington office.
Thank you, Chair Parrish. So without discussing strategy, what I can provide is an update on what I can provide is an update on everything that has happened so far and what our response has been. So, we understand that there have been concerns about executive orders issued by the Trump administration related to DEI, federal hiring freezes, federal funding pauses, and they are all issues that we are actively tracking, and we are actively addressing to this day, even so much as to, we have our leadership here in DC, which we've arranged meetings directly with these agencies to bring forth those concerns. When it comes to the DEI executive orders, the position of the Navajo Nation and what the Navajo Nation Washington office has continuously conveyed to our federal partners is that tribes do not belong within the DEI category, because tribes maintain a unique political relationship with the United States government. No other groups in the United States have standing treaties with the United States government. So, that is something that we continue to emphasize. Those are discussions, it is education that needs to be taking place here within DC since there is new leadership who is new to their interactions with Indian country and may not necessarily understand the trust and treaty obligation that the federal government has. So, it takes education, and we are continuing to educate them. In terms of the federal hiring freezes, President Nigron has met with Secretary Burgum to address the concerns about freezes within BIE and BIA and with Interior as a whole for services, or for positions that provide direct services to tribes. That has been followed up with several letters to the administration, as well as Secretary Burgum. Secretary Burgum has committed to working with the Navajo Nation and other tribes in being able to identify positions that have a direct service element to tribes and making sure that they are exempted from any reduction in force initiatives, and if they have been terminated, to reinstate those positions. We have seen that with Haskell University and Sippee University. They have already reinstated several positions, all of them, but they are currently working on addressing some of the other positions that were not reinstated. The same thing with the BIA and some of the positions within the Realty Offices in order to push forward business site leases, et cetera. We are continuously identifying positions and making sure that the Department of the Interior knows and can exempt those specific positions from any reduction in force initiatives. We've also highlighted the impact that the federal hiring freeze has had on not just the Navajo Nation, but Indian country as people retire or leave through the federal system. Those positions are unable to be filled because of the federal hiring freeze in place. It was a request, especially this week, that was reemphasized to BIE, BIA, and IHS that those positions that have a direct service element be exempted from the hiring freeze, so that we can continue to provide the services to the people, as well as advance infrastructure projects. This doesn't include just teachers, hospitals, doctors, et cetera. It also includes engineers who are important to the sanitation deficiency projects that are ongoing within the nation. We've also been working to ensure that any federal funding that has been put on pause is identified and worked with the administration to making sure that those funds continue to be dispersed. One of the specific ones were the BIA tribal electrification program, and we get confirmation from the Secretary's office that they have identified it, and they are working to move those funds through the pipeline and get it to the Navajo Nation, so we can advance our solar initiatives. In regards to some of the ongoing issues with the Department of Education and the concerns about its closure, or its concerns about providing support to Native American students in colleges or tribal colleges, leadership does have a meeting this upcoming Friday with the Office of Civil Rights to clarify the positions of the nations and to, again, educate them on the importance of maintaining the trust and treaty obligation to tribes, and that tribes do not fall within the DEI classification, that they are specific political sovereigns, and our existence is not based off of, our existence is not based off of race, but as an enrolled membership into a federally recognized tribe, again, reemphasizing that political status. In terms of future strategy, as I have indicated, if we are to talk about strategy on how to respond, I would just emphasize that we would need to go into executive session to discuss future strategy, so we're not laying all our cards on the table, but I would like to just provide reassurance that we are actively monitoring and addressing each situation that comes out. Now, I know that some executive orders don't necessarily impact the operations of tribal governments, but they do have a real impact within the households of many families. While we're doing our best to try to address that, our focus has been primarily focusing on preserving the governance structure of our tribe and making sure that nothing impacts our sovereignty. So, that is my report as of now, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ahasteen. That does conclude the report today and on our agenda. So, members of the committees are in motion to accept the report. Motion by Chairwoman Amber Canes Bacardi, do you have a second? Second by Delegate Curtis Yenito. Members of the committee, I'll look at the queue for questions. Chair Amber Canes Bacardi.
Oh, ahiha, thank you. Appreciate that high-level summary. Pro Tem, I want to ask the committee, we do have some subject matter experts here at the chambers regarding the Medicaid portion of the plans for the federal government. If the committee, if I could ask, if we could ask the subject matter expert to come up and just give us a high-level overview on what the committee and the nation should be concerned about when it comes to any type of Medicaid reform happening in DC. Joanne, I'm sorry, Joanne. She was looking for her card, and I was shaking hands, so. Would that be okay from the committee by consensus, if there's no objection?
Oh, thank you. Members of the committee, there's a request for experts through Medicaid to continue the conversation along the lines of those questions posed by Chair Amber Canes Bacardi. Is there any questions or oppositions to allowing experts from Medicaid to also add to the report today? Okay, hearing none, we'll welcome up Chair Amber Canes Bacardi. What was the agent's name you'd like to identify?
Joanne Walters.
Joanne Walters?
Joette, I apologize.
Joette.
Joette Walters.
Joette Walters. We can welcome up Joette Walters to the presenter's table to give. We'll give the floor to you for 10 minutes, and then the members of the committee can offer any questions. Thank you.
Allowing me this time to address honorable counsel, and I just thank you for opportunity. I was not prepared to provide an overview, but since there was opportunity and honorable delegate had brought up the discussion about these changes. Tuba City Regional Healthcare Corporation is very concerned about these proposals that are being discussed at the federal level. The recent changes that have occurred with these executive orders and memorandums, some of them do affect us. So, if I could give just a little bit of an overview, January 27th, when the federal freeze did happen, that was issued, it did affect our grants program. Many of our healthcare organizations do rely on a lot of grants, and it did affect us that day. Thankfully, those things have been stayed, and so now we're able to draw down. So, there was almost close to a week where we were not able to draw down on some of our grants. So, those were the immediate effects we felt that day, and since then, I know Tuba City did put in a 90-day contingency plan as we continue to see these kinds of changes, and we want to preserve our budgets, because we did have budgets to grow and expand programs, but with these kinds of changes, they do affect our ability to do that kind of work. And so, in maintaining a stability to our organization and to continue to provide services, we did a proposal, a 90-day contingency plan, and cut some of our discretionary kind of spending. Kind of, again, just to continue to maintain operations as it needs, as it needs to, and to, and that required, that included freezing some of our vacant positions that had been there for a long time. And so, considering some of our discretionary funding on, you know, funds around travel and training and the like. I know other 638, other 638 healthcare agencies also did the same thing, excuse me. So, again, just as a picture of how our organization is responding to some of these things. Now, with the Medicaid proposals that are being discussed, we have some very real concerns about what that would mean. So, Medicaid is one of our biggest reimbursers. So, for Tuba City Regional, 50% of our reimbursements come from Medicaid. I don't have exact numbers, as I wasn't prepared to share this with you today, but I would certainly follow up with a letter to document these things. But what that means is, that's a large number of our native beneficiaries are enrolled in Medicaid and use that service, and use those funds to access care, dental, mental health, behavioral health, medical care. And so, with these proposed cuts, there is a real concern that our members are going to lose access to getting these care. It also does affect, obviously, our bottom line, our revenue, as, again, access is 50% of our revenue. And so, that would really, really affect, again, our bottom line as a healthcare organization, and I don't think I'm that far different from the other 638 hospitals on the reservation. We also are concerned with the work exemptions. That is one more proposal that they're making in the Medicaid discussions about the work requirements around for our Medicaid enrollees. We've also proposed, and we support, an exemption from that. Tribes have been exempted from the, these work requirements, and that has been stayed for quite some time, but now that they are talking about reversing that. So, that too will affect our members, because there's not a lot of jobs in rural Arizona, and particularly Tuba City. So, if these work requirements are put in place, that would affect our enrollees' ability, again, to have Medicaid, Medicaid services, to be Medicaid beneficiaries, and, again, affect, and has direct implications about their access to care. So, without a lot of detail, I can just tell you our concerns, and we would like, and we do support the Navajo Nation's advocacy effort in a position paper, and asking Congress to preserve full funding for Medicaid services provided to our, to our American Indians, specifically to our Navajo Nation members, exempting us also from being counted in the per capita caps, which is also being proposed in these cuts, being discussed. Nothing, again, has been given to us in writing to let us know what is indeed being cut, but those, again, are things that we would advocate and support for. Also advocating continued exemption from the mandatory work requirements. And so, the other part of, and then a lot of these things that are happening at the IHS as well, the freezing of positions, much-needed positions, again, this really goes back towards impact to services and our ability to provide services. Although Tuba City doesn't have any, Tuba City Regional doesn't have any direct IHS employees, most of our staff are direct hires to the organization, but these cuts do affect our neighboring and our sister IHS facilities. And when those things get cut, we see the demand for healthcare and access to healthcare to these different communities served by these direct service IHS facilities. We see that there's, the demand then falls back on us, and, you know, we don't have all these resources. So, we really work together with our IHS organizations, and then also, you know, trying to build services. So, in the end, with these Medicaid cuts, what I, as a CEO, am fearful of is being able to expand services to, the reimbursements we receive allows us to improve services, allows us to expand services, which I think many of our 638s have been able to do with this kind of revenue. But also, more importantly, it really allows our beneficiaries to have access to care. We already know that healthcare, we are at such a disparity, there is a large need, and to cut off Medicaid from our family, from our community, is a real disservice and a real negative impact to healthcare moving forward. So, thank you for allowing me this time, ahiha, and I'm, I, Tuba City, and I know the other 638s, and even the 638 Association would be open to having more dialogue and to having, to be part of the strategy and providing numbers and data to this, to our council, so they can advocate where we need to, and be those technical experts, again, to provide more data, so that you can advocate effectively to our federal and our state legislators. Ahiha, Nana.
Thank you, Ms. Walters, for providing that testimony to the Nubekiyat Council Committee today. We appreciate you coming to Winderock, to the Navajo Nation Chambers. Members of the committee, do we have more questions to the report, either to the Washington office or for the Tuba City Regional Healthcare? I'll go to Honorable Dr. Andy Ness.
Ahiha, Chair Deja, Chair, Arakuro Shima, for being here. So, I understand Washington office is still on the call, I'm assuming, but I think it's important, for myself, like, the public information is something that we've been trying to emphasize. I'm sure many of my colleagues have been getting requests, seeking answers, and the more we're delaying public information, it's not helping the situation. And so, some recommendations to the Washington office is, you know, Christopher Curley, who's also a member of the Tuba City, also chairs the 638 Association, which is comprised of our 638 IHS, as well as Sage Memorial Hospital, on these types of issues. And I think it's important when we continue to emphasize one voice, I think that's one area that can be increased, as far as measuring what those repercussions are when there's these executive orders or these things coming out of the Washington office there at the national level. So, that would be one recommendation. The other thing is like a frequently asked question or fact sheet. I know things are changing, but I just think it's important that when we talk about certain things coming out of this administration, we want to make sure we're highlighting some of those details. Yesterday, I had a chance to give a report to the Twin Warriors Society. It's our local Fort Defiance Chapter Veterans Organization, and a lot of our veterans are also concerned about the layoffs, about the decrease in employees from the Veterans Administration. And so, there's a lot of different questions that I also receive, and I think it's important, Mr. Ahasteen, that yourself and your team continue to impress on these matters promptly, because I feel that we're kind of beyond executive session. I understand, you know, the importance of executive sessions and being able to not really, you know, there's just a lot of moving parts. But at the end of the day, we have the general public here, on Navajo Nation and off Navajo Nation, who are being affected, who need planning measures, et cetera. They could make those determinations, they can make those plans. So, I just wanted to offer those recommendations, nothing specific as far as questions, but again, just because it's, you know, there's different recommendations as far as ES and everything. But I wanted to include those, and, you know, the Washington office has heard these recommendations as far as the public output on several occasions, so we're just looking, I'm looking forward to that. And if we need to put a timeline on it, I think, colleagues, we can propose that directive here at Nubekiyat. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Shana, Honorable Dr. Andy Nez, for your statements today and also emphasizing the need for public information. I know the Speaker's Office is working on an outreach plan and also the Washington Office, so we'll give some time over to our Executive Director from the Washington Office to respond to your questions. Mr. Ahestin, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Parrish, and thank you, Delegate Nez, for your comments and your suggestions. Yes, we are working on providing public information. We are in works with the Office of the Speaker and her communication team, as well as our communication team here to try to put together information that explicitly gives people the factual information that is coming out. I think it's important to note, while these are proposals that are ongoing, there is no current threat to Medicaid and things like that. So for instance, the continuing resolution that was dropped in the House and is currently being considered by the Senate does not have any of the Medicaid cuts or anything from those proposals that are in discussion. We don't expect any impacts to Medicaid, Medicare, or Social Security, but it is something that we will continue to monitor very closely should there be a shift in policy, because Congress can still utilize budget reconciliation up until the end of the fiscal year, because they're allowed to do it once per fiscal year to approve different types of cuts or new spending plans, et cetera. So I just want everyone to be reassured, as of right now, there is no impact to current Medicaid or Medicare services. We are going to continue to monitor that, but overall, we will work on some sort of report, public report, public information that we can get out to the people. So I appreciate those concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ahestin, for responding to the questions posed by the NABOKIETI Committee today. I'll recognize Honorable Delegate Curtis Yunito.
Yeah, good morning. Is it morning still, unless I snu now? I want to thank you for the update that you gave us, Mr. Ahestin, and I have one question for you about the BIA roads funds. Any changes happen, you know, with the road funds? That'll be my question to you and then to Joanne Walter. I have a question about the home care employees. You know, there's, you know, some of their kids or relatives that they go out and they take care of them. How would that be affected and what are you guys doing about that because of the budget cuts and so forth? Employees though, being cut, using the Medicaid. That would be my question, two questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Delegate Yunito, for your questions. Delegate Yunito, to add a little bit more, I know Delegate Yunito, we had a discussion in the Navajo Utah Commission on Tuesday about Medicaid, but that was specifically for the cuts in the state of Utah. I don't know if Ms. Walters can answer the best that she can on anything else impacting Arizona, but if we could potentially set up some meetings with the Navajo Utah Health Services to see how that also impacts them, but just a little bit more information. We'll go over to Mr. Ahestin to answer Delegate Yunito's questions about the BIA concern regarding roads and then go back to Ms. Walters. So, Mr. Ahestin?
Thank you, Chair Parrish, and thank you for your question, Delegate Yunito. So as of right now, the CR keeps all of the funding levels the same for FY24 up until the end of September, which at that point, they could try to pass a budget that has some sort of different cuts through budget reconciliation, but as of right now, there is no impact that we see in the CR on BIA road funds. We also have not seen any updates to the BIA Green Book, so those should be coming out anytime between the end of March to the beginning of May. And once those are out, we can take a look at that and provide another update, but as of right now, I don't see any impact.
Thank you, Mr. Ahestin. We'll go back to Ms. Walters.
Best as I can, I'll try to answer that question. Thank you, though. I think as far as the home care, I'm not, so Tubus City Regional does not have that service in our organization, however, I, so I can't answer that specific to how this Arizona State Medicaid program would be affected, how that program would be affected by the Arizona State Medicaid. I can certainly look to see what those, what things could potentially change. As Mr. Ahestin has already stated, nothing has been in writing and there's nothing directed. These are all proposed discussions that are happening, and as an organization, we're doing what we, we're getting our programs together to assure that we can keep services going. And I think the advocacy is really important as we educate our legislation, legislators about what they're discussing and giving them an insight to how those things impact our services, both hospital, outpatient, and then grants programs. I also, although we've been talking about IHS and tribes, another part of the federal government that does deliver healthcare is through the HERSA, and our mobile medical programs are funded through that arm, HERSA. And I believe a couple of our 638 facilities also get funding through HERSA. That's a whole nother part of the healthcare system that's also looking at proposed cuts and changes. So again, I think just the more education we can provide you all and giving you more data would help you as you do your work in advocating for healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll recognize Honorable Danny Simpson.
Thank you, Honorable Ten Speaker, members of the NABOKIETI, guests. With all these executive orders coming from Washington DC, again, we'd really like to have our Navajo people know what's going on and how the Council and Office of the President and Vice President are addressing these executive orders that are coming down, almost on a daily basis. And we're not getting all the information on the impact of these executive orders. And I appreciate that to where, Mr. Ahestin, thank you for being online, appreciate that. You made it very simple. I think that's what our people reference to what you say on Medicaid, and it doesn't impact the Medicaid right now with some of these executive orders coming down. That's a very simple answer, simple where our Navajo people would like to hear. And make it very simple. I mean, there's all these federal programs that, you know, that we work with or programs that came, that became 638 or certain things, you know, we had numerous programs within, under Navajo Nation, even law enforcement, you know, public safety 638, social service certain programs 638, like CHR 638, you know, we can name a lot of things under 638. Again, what Dr. Nez stated, one voice, one voice. I mean, that's what we need to, you know, really take that to the federal government as one voice. I mean, with even all these programs that are advocating, when maybe what they're trying to, maybe strategize to advocate how they will address these executive orders that might be impacting, again, going back to the 638 hospitals within Navajo Nation. Now, we have to work for them, and we work with them, to where we speak one voice, even from that, for the board, for the hospital. I mean, that makes us stronger, to where we would definitely be heard. But at the same time, exactly, I really appreciate Shana putting this on the agenda, I really appreciate that. And I stated that during the end of the winter session, that we need to address it as soon as possible, because these things are coming down. And these are things that I want to address these issues as soon as possible. And now, we're seeing that these, all of these orders are coming down, and like I said, we do have some experts that know the impact of these executive orders. So again, I really, really agree with Dr. Nez, one voice. So how do we go about that? I think with all the federal programs and especially Washington DC, and all the federal programs that receives funding within Navajo Nation, we need to sit down and we need OPVP here. We need all the decision-makers in one room. Again, there was a meeting, Eastern Agency Council had a meeting the first Saturday of this month, and basically, they stated Navajo Nation Council has, or Office of the President and Vice President has not taken a position on these executive orders. Again, we were talking about going to executive session to, I mean, I guess there's some, I guess OPVP might be strategizing how to address these issues, but again, that's just one office. And we take, again, Dr. Nez stated, one voice, we need that. We don't need a voice, a different voice from Navajo Nation Council or entities that receive federal funds than a voice from Office of the President. That does not work for us. That works against us. So again, Pro Tem Speaker, I think we definitely, definitely need to work how we get that one voice out there and then send everybody coming to one room and say, this is our position and this is how we're going to strategize. Again, strategize, again, as stated by Director Ahestin, stating that we had strategized, but that's just coming from Office of the President and Vice President. If we hear that, we might be able to agree to that, but again, we've got 24 minds here on Navajo Nation Council leadership, and we have all these expertise, experts within these departments that receive federal fundings and, again, our hospitals, our BI school, our community grant school, those are being impacted in certain ways. So Pro Tem, Madam Speaker, I guess with this NABOKIETI, we need your guidance in how we go about this. I mean, this is not a 30-minute meeting, one hour, I think it's all day, even two days. We got to get a strong position, we got a strong position in how we address this. We need to send one voice message to the federal government. So I will need your guy, I will need your guys, plus the NABOKIETI Committee, how we move forward with this, because I really want to have a one voice, just like Dr. Nez stated, one voice and make it strong. Thank you, Madam Pro Tem Speaker, members of the NABOKIETI.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Danny Simpson, for your words. Members of the committee, my, this is my recommendation. I know I'm sitting as Pro Tem Speaker this week, but I can work with our speaker. I feel that what the committee needs, the council needs, is at least some dates in our calendar where we can see that we're moving it forward, that we're moving this discussion forward, because at least in my experience working with the Budget and Finance Committee, when it comes to a big project that the committee's working on, we work on it every day. We work on it, if it's not 30 minutes a day, it's an hour a day, but little by little, we move forward to building a letter, a memo, or legislation together. So I will work with our speaker's staff to hear what the speaker's envisioning, because I have not received what the speaker is planning for the council, but I will, again, emphasize everyone's comments today and work with the speaker's staff to see if we can begin planning out some days. I know the speaker has set aside Saturdays where we can meet and have these discussions virtually, otherwise, because of how quickly these executive orders are coming through, through the pipeline, through the Navajo Nation Washington Office, we need to meet and receive updates on a daily basis. We need to know where we're moving and how this is continuing to have those impacts. Once we receive that information from the Navajo Nation Washington Office, I believe that we can pull in the proper shareholders to receive information about how those impacts are made. I really do commend the Health and Education Human Services Committee for their work. They are on top of all of the executive orders, so thank you all for your commitment. They meet, they have been meeting almost every day over the past two weeks and watching these federal dollars funnel through. So again, I really commend the leadership of Council Delegate Vinge James, Vice Chairwoman Jermaine Simonson, Delegate Curtis Yunito, Delegate Helena Nez Biege, also Honorable Delegate Dr. Andy Nez. Thank you all for raising these concerns. If you all, if I could potentially meet with, or I'll take a look at your agendas and then we can continue to push these through agendas and special NABOKIETI Committee meetings throughout the month of March and then into April. So I appreciate everyone's words today. I will elevate the concern and support my colleagues on the 25th Navajo Nation Council. Members of the committee, are there any other questions to the report today? We'll go to Chairwoman Amber Canes McCrady.
Yes, so I just want to echo and I appreciate Shana with that one voice. So again, just continuing to invite, because it's not just going to be the President's Office, we also need to invite judicial. A lot of their funding is based off of federal funding, and we're not exactly sure what that's going to look like in the future, especially as we see some of these US DOJ websites start removing critical reports, critical discussions, and then what's the future of some of their tribal liaisons for these federal programs that are going to set to consolidate. So I just looked on the Navajo Nation Washington website, because I was telling people, oh, look on the website, you know, this is our Navajo Nation Washington Office. And so, the first step there, I'm going to, I'm going to ask the committee if we could, the Navajo Nation Washington Office should look at the committee's priorities for the federal government and look at, it says right here, President Nigran's priorities, and then meld that together, like, cross-reference, because I'm in the opinion that the most time, all of us, we disagree, that kind of rises to the top. There's so many areas that we agree on, and that's the power that you can get from the nation to say, these are the main areas we agree on. And if there's someone in leadership that says, you know, my constituents, they're not part of that 50% of Medicaid, we'll prove it, right? And then we can move forward, because as a nation, what then are the, what then are the areas we're disagreeing on? And then we can move forward with what we agree on, because they do, in any power setting, like in DC, they've always used that division between us, whether it was the Fort Wingate land, whether, you know, water rights issues, when it comes to like mineral things. And so, we have to have a clear vision, and it has to start with our Washington Office, because you have President Nigran's priorities, we have a resolution, do a cross, all you have to do is a cross-reference, and I'm pretty sure about 90% of that will be the same. And if there's areas that we need to follow up on, then that's where we have these conversations. But I would like to see on the website that integration, so that it's Navajo Nation priorities, Navajo Nation, and it has to be the voice too that includes judicial. And there should be, and I think this is where, you know, we could direct our public, here you get the breaking news, here you get from today in the summary that we're dealing with. It doesn't have to deal with strategy, it has to be like, as a Navajo Nation citizen, how is this going to impact me? And I've received that, I've received that from other entities. There's AI technology that can quickly research and you put in the right, how will this impact our relationships? And that's where we need to, I want to hear a little bit from the controller, which programs we should be looking at? We need to know from OMB Contract Services, because the continuing resolution will fund us till September, but every day, the administration is chipping away at that division in terms of what has already been put into contract. We have federal contractors now that are losing their contracts over an email, right? These are millions, $1 billion was canceled from the USDA contract to provide fresh local farm food into our schools. That was done with an email. And so, I can't sit here and say the continuing resolution will, you know, Medicaid will fund that till the continuing resolution. fund that till the continuing resolution, when we're in a time where the executive has says they have this federal mandate and a court case takes a while, even a stay on, on the different levels. So that's what I'm saying, we have to come together as a nation and then all of the different programs, we're all on the same page. Because the BI, the BI E is having their listening session tomorrow. Nothing has come to leadership. I got that from a school board member. Nothing has come from, from Navajo Nation to say, if you privatize these community schools, this, like, this is how it will impact not only my district, but our nation and our, and our goals to instill cultural values, community values. There's three communities, BI E schools, but that's the only school in the community is either a BIA or community school. We should know that. What are they again?
Some examples.
Some examples. Chilchimbito Community School, Navajo Mountain Community School, and Torion. This is going to have a direct impact if this BIA proposal, and they told us in January, they're going to give us in 90 days. So what, January, February? It's coming up in a few weeks. And so we have to be able to have this one voice and not rely on the federal government to look out in our best interest. They did not do that during COVID. They do not do that when we're asking for our water rights. They do not do that for anything that doesn't benefit them. And so we have to speak for our people. It's no longer who you voted for, it's no longer what party you identify with. This is going to impact our children, this is going to impact hospitals and healthcare, this is going to impact agriculture, natural resources, our whole livelihood. And we have to have a strong voice. Anybody from, and just have judicial, OPVP, pick someone so we can have this conversation because we have to do something and no longer just wait. We, we've waited too long. And when you wait too long, that then demonstrates that you concur with the action. Silence on an issue is deafening. And we have to speak for our people. And so that's what I'm asking, and I'm asking the Washington Office, do you have that ability to get Navajo Nation leadership concurrently having these discussions? Because right now, your webpage divides us. And so, so change the webpage to have that Navajo Nation position. And anything that we can't right now agree on, then set that aside and we'll continue to work on it. But we have to be united. We have to. Thank you.
Thank you, Shada. Members of the NUBIC ETI Committee, I would also like to recommend that the committee can also pass a directive after the report because the NUBIC ETI Committee is the oversight committee to the Navo Nation Washington Office. So they will carry through with any directives. Of course, we'll give that courtesy over to Mr. Ahestin to provide his response, response to the statements and questions that were posed by the committee members. But Mr. Ahestin, I do want to echo my colleagues' concerns with the advocacy. I know that the, the Washington Office is doing the best that they can and resources may be limited. However, at the end of the day, the Washington Office represents the entire Navajo Nation, not one branch of the Navajo Nation government. Mr. Ahestin, the floor is yours.
Thank you for that and thank you for the comments, Bacrotti. And it is something that I have brought up in the past and I continue to bring up is we are working within our best abilities to address the needs of the entire nation. And there obviously has been some divisiveness between the two branches and I'm doing my best to make sure that we continue to work respecting one another. But I've reported this on multiple occasions, it takes collaboration from both ends. And sometimes we don't get information as to what the council is doing. And we find out, you know, the day of or the day after things have happened. So we have requested on multiple occasions that collaboration and I'm more than happy to work with the council in finding what a sustainable solution is on that. And I said it from day one for my confirmation, I'm going to continue to work with the council. You know, we are working in the best interests of all the people and we're going to continue to do so. But I'm, I am open to suggestions and we will certainly take a look at our messaging, especially on our websites to make sure that's reflective of unity. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ahestin. I'll go back to the NUBIC ETI Committee for any questions to the report thus far. Second call for questions. Third call for questions. Members of the committee, I will work with the speaker, Crystal and Curly, and provide those future dates for collaboration. We'll work with the Washington Office to provide further information. I know almost half of the council is advocating on behalf of the Navajo people and are getting current updates from Washington DC. But of course, there are those of us here at the council chambers that are holding down the, the chambers. So to that, I just want to state that it is important for us to receive the same information that our colleagues are and, and those leaders that are out there, even though we may be here. So Mr. Ahestin, if you could provide those summary reports back to the 25th Navo Nation Council as a whole entity, we'd appreciate to know what is going on today and if there are any major changes that have gone on today that the rest of the council is not aware of. Thank you. With that, members of the committee, we'll go to a vote on the report. 20 seconds on the board, colleagues. Members of the committee, the time has expired on the board. Council Delegate Casey Allen Johnson, how do you vote? Council Delegate Rick Nez, how do you vote? Oh, Council Delegate Casey Allen Johnson votes green. Council Delegate George Toth. All right, members of the committee, we have all the members here in the chambers voting on the board. We have 10 voting in affirmative, zero opposed, two members absent, 11 members excused. So the motion does carry on the report. Thank you, Mr. Ahestin, and also Ms. Walters for providing the, the updates to the NUBIC ETI Committee. Mr. Ahestin, we will continue to work with you and the judicial branch and the executive branch to bring further information back to the Navajo Nation. We look forward to that public information plan and as soon as possible today. I know there's an Eastern Agency Council meeting and that they requested that a member from the Navo Nation Washington Office be there to give updates to the, at that Agency Council meeting. And I'm sure it's the same for each of the Agency Council meetings. There's a Northern Agency Council meeting this weekend, there's a Western Agency Council meeting coming up in the month of April. We do need that plan as soon as possible. Thank you, Mr. Ahestin. Members of the committee, we are now moving through our agenda. We are on the end of our agenda. Members of the committee, are there any announcements today? Second call for announcements. Third call. Hearing on, members of the committee, is there a motion to adjourn today? Motion by Council Delegate Shawna Anne Claw, do you have a second? Second by Council Delegate Curtis Yunito. Members of the committee, we'll go to roll call vote on the motion to adjourn. While we're voting, I wanted to mention that we do have a school coming in at 1:30. We have Dithnotodity coming in at 1:30. So if you are all around, we could welcome the school over to the council chambers, but they'll be here about 1:30. Members of the committee, we do have a vote on the floor. Council Delegate Herman Daniels, how do you vote? Council Delegate Herman Daniels is not in the chambers at, is he? Oh, he votes green. Sorry, I didn't see you, Shira. All right, we have the full vote on the floor, nine voting in favor, one member voting opposed for adjournment today. The motion does carry. We are adjourned today at 12:33 PM. Members of the committee. Thank you all for joining us online. Members of the committee, we can have a discussion about the financial impacts. I'm thinking about the rest of the week. Let's see, we have tomorrow and today. If we could, let's see, Sean, how long will it take you to do that analysis? I think we also need OMB at the floor. I don't know if OMB has done an analysis. So maybe if we could give notification to OMB and then we could plan a leadership meeting tomorrow afternoon. Members of the committee, are you guys available tomorrow afternoon? On Zoom, we can make a Zoom in-person. Dr. Andy Niz? I mean, I think Speaker is, yeah. But if you guys don't want to meet this week, I think in Budget and Finance, we can meet on Monday afternoon. If you guys want to join us for a leadership call on the financial impacts, we can, I'll work with the Budget and Finance Committee on, on developing that. Okay, we're adjourned.